My microphone on, my microwave on, my microphone on. Okay. Any call to order, roll call please.
Here. 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 Mayor.
Here. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think we need to amend the agenda.
It's my understanding.
Add Resolution 777 to your agenda.
And what does that pertain to?
The Dog Park Grant.
Okay, you're gonna be speaking on that when the time comes, you're Roger?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna make a...
Yeah, I'll make an amendment to the motion that we amend the agenda to include the Dog Park as stated by our finance director.
Have a motion here, second.
So moved, okay.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Do I need to make a motion to approve the agenda now? Do you hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This evening, Councilman McBride will give the prayer. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings and we thank you for the ability to be here tonight and to serve our community and to serve you. I pray to your God that for wisdom, for the council, that we would make decisions according to your will. And Father, I thank you for our city. I thank you for those who work each day in our city and those who lead each day. I pray your blessings and protection upon them. Forgive us of our many sins and thank you for all you do for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Jim. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of the amendments of the previous meeting dated January 28th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we will recognize any visitors and citizens with any grievances or appraisers. If you can just come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Patrick Cameron. I'm the owner of Plinch River Tattoo and Coffee at 141 North Main Street. And the reason I'm here tonight is to see about getting permission about how we can move forward for a farmer's market in downtown Clinton. So I'm here just to see what we need to do if we can get approval and then we can do more research and bring that back to you.
Well, what we're looking at right now, Roger, you want to answer or me and Jim? Go ahead.
Yeah, Cameron, actually, we've been in discussions with the Chamber of Commerce and they're working right now on some grants, looking at some areas to just to do that, look at some farmer markets. So it's kinda in the works. We met, what, two weeks ago, Rick? We met a couple of weeks ago just talking about this very same thing. So it's kinda in the process, kinda in the infancy stage of it, but we are definitely looking at it. So it's something that we're definitely talking about.
Okay, is this something that maybe we can start sooner than later, or?
Rick, what's the, when was the grant?
Probably within the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay, well, what if we did something outdoors right now until that point to get the ball rolling? All I'm doing is I have a, you know, business here in downtown Clinton and I'm trying to bring more people to downtown and use downtown than is going on right now.
I think what Rick is talking about actually is to get a permanent structure to put it. What I'd recommend you do, Jason Brown with our Parks and Rec Department, Jason actually did one, it's been a few years ago, but we had one at a couple of different locations that we tried. He was working with Joe Hall, who was at the time the county extension agent. I know they tried, I know at Lakefront Park at one time doing one and maybe one other location I'd recommend, and I can get you Jason's number to call him.
Right.
I don't know what location you're looking at, but they did some...
I was thinking of the old Hammer's parking lot behind...
Okay, and maybe working with Jason. And he had some contacts with some of the farmers that actually did it and through the county extension agent too. And that would be a start to at least do a temporary one.
Right, right.
But I don't think we have an issue with it.
Okay, well, great then. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Come on, there's not 40 of y'all. Everybody's happy and, all right. Last chance. Communications for the mayor. Last month, I made some appointments and I think they blame me on this, but I put the wrong term ending date. I blame Bill Riggs, but anyway, I'm joking. So I need to go back through and just make those, correct those terms. So for Clinton Housing Authority, I'd like to appoint Stephen Queener to complete Joanne Shuford's term, term ending December 31st, 2020. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under the tree board, I'd like to extend Bob Jameson and Mary Hatmaker's appointment. It's a four-year term, term ending November 30th, 2022. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. On ACEDA, as I explained last month, Rick Meredith is already on ACEDA with his position with the Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to add Alan Tadlock in that appointment that the city has. Term ends November 30th, 2021. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. On the Clinton Port Authority, I'd like to appoint Steve Combs in place of Byron Hale. Term ends the first Thursday in February 2029. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And that is all I have today as far as communications. Under Community Reports, City School Board Report, Kelly Johnson.
Clinton City Schools has been in session for the past few days despite the flooding and despite the flu. We have been blessed to have wonderful attendance rates, so our attendance rates have varied between 93% and 98%. So we're gonna cross our fingers and hope that everybody stays well and we'll continue to clean those classrooms every single night and hope that we can avoid the flu outbreak within Clinton City Schools. I come to you tonight with just one piece of business to bring before your attention. It became known to us that two pieces of property behind Clinton Elementary School were available for purchase. That would be 200 Marshall Street and 303 Lynart Street. Those are side by side and I have put a memo on the desk for each one of you with a diagram showing where those lots are. Scott Ray negotiated on behalf of Clinton City Schools and we have verbally agreed with the owners on a price of $95,800. And what that would allow is that is actually the lot that is located right across from our fifth and sixth grade wing. And so as we're looking at needing parking, really this lot would be prime for us to do some parking to allow parents and visitors to have easy access into the back door of Clinton Elementary School. So what we are requesting is since we are unable to purchase land, if the City of Clinton would please purchase that on behalf of us with the understanding that Clinton City Schools will fully reimburse the City of Clinton for the cost of those two properties. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Kelly, I think this is a smart move too because a lot of, you know, a lot of our facilities are becoming landlocked as far as future growth and, you know, the city's gonna continue to grow.
Right.
Hopefully we grow a little bit faster here over the next couple of years. And we're not that far away to having to add on to a school.
Correct.
And it might not be a parking lot. It might be an addition to the school and somewhere else would be a parking lot. But I think this is a good approach to take to really just to plan for future growth and development.
Well, thank you. We have, what this will allow us to do is we have the whole strip of land down Marshall Street now with the exception of, with the exception of one house.
Is it on one, is it in the middle or one side or the other?
It is the third lot, the third lot. It's a narrow driveway and then a house, but we own the properties on both sides of them. But I don't think they're interested in selling at this time.
Is it number 12 on here, Kelly?
Let's see. It would be, if you look at number nine, we own the lot right beside number nine on Marshall Street and then see that really real narrow strip there? That's the lot that we don't own, but we own everything down the road.
That's where they have a double wide on the back end, I mean, it's on the end of that narrow strip. Is that, is it a double wide?
Yeah, but we bought that, so that's been moved and we own that piece.
So is the plan to tear down those structures that are on nine and 10 now?
Correct, correct. There is one structure that when we were ready to do, the parking would come down. Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, and that's all I have if you have any questions for me.
No amendments or anything, huh?
No, we're easy on you tonight.
So flu's been all right in Clinton?
Flu is good, we're just actively preparing for tea and ready, trying to hold school every day that we can.
Good.
I've got some kids that aren't real happy with me about that though. They'd like, they'd like a snow day, a rain day, a flu day, some kinda day. Thank you.
Well, the wind spring break, is it in two weeks?
Spring break's coming up, yes, and we will be having spring break.
Good, good. Thanks Kelly.
No amendments, just a financial statement for your, if anybody has any questions. I could point out, I guess, a few highlights. For our January 31st, 2019, General Purpose Fund, our revenues collected are about 55% of budget. And the same period last year, 2018, 55% of budget. Expenditures, same relationship. In 2019, we are 51% of budget. Same period in 2018, we're 53% of budget. What that tells me is our cash flow is consistent year over year. And because we're, our revenue collections are in line with our expenditures, our month-to-month cash flow is in line to cover our budgeted expenditures. And it's just my recommendation that you accept these financial statements.
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on February the 11th. Business Christie Hicks requesting final plat review for property located at North Charles G Severs Boulevard. This is the property across the street from Ray Varner that was rezoned so that they could put residential in it and that was approved. And then two other pieces connected. Applicant Thomas Hicks Construction requesting rezoning from B4 to R3 for property located at Frank Price Boulevard. Property is owned to R, excuse me, B4. And also Thomas Hicks Construction requesting preliminary site plan for a planned unit development located at Frank Price Boulevard. Property is owned B4. This property is behind the Walgreens in front of the existing housing complex there. During the discussion, I asked her, she has 72 apartments in the existing complex. There would be 71 added in the new complex. So this would be down Frank Price, I think it's Frank Price, yeah, Frank Price Boulevard behind the Walgreens to the existing housing area now. Any questions on that before I move on to Board of Zoning?
Any questions for Councilman Gann?
Is that the same type of housing that's there now?
No, it will be different. It will be, I don't know if I've still, I don't have the map, it will be a more of a condo type place, townhomes.
So they'll be homes or condos that people will purchase?
Right.
They're not, they're not gonna be subsidized at all?
Don't think so.
I understand.
You know, they still have some land there carved out for retail?
I think there's some still on the other side.
Okay.
And I think they're keeping, they may revise this because I think there's some on the front end of the complex that they're gonna keep for office space and perhaps some retail space there.
Okay.
That would be behind Walgreens.
Any issues the Planning Commission had?
No, other than, you know, just meeting the necessary signatures from CUB and this was, this was a preliminary site plan other than the rezoning.
Did they say when they, when they would hope to start construction?
I'm not sure that I heard that, but I think they're anxious to get started.
Okay.
And then secondly, the Board of Zoning and Appeals also met the same night. Applicant Donna Harrington requesting rear setback variance to 16 feet located at 320 South Fowler Street. Property is owned R2. When I first looked at this, I was a little bit confused. This is a Fowler Street in South Clinton, not in North Clinton. And then this is one of those situations where when we annexed South Clinton, we got, we got into a situation. Her existing rear porch is a non-conforming rear deck. She is wanting to add to the side, not anymore to the end of it, but it already non-conforms and she's wanting to add to the side. So in order to add to the side, it has to be brought into conformity. So she's asking for a variance so that she is within the existing codes. She was within the codes when they, you know, when we annexed them, but since we've annexed them, the codes that she was originally under in our codes aren't the same. So this doesn't, she is, she's wanting to expand her deck, but the variance actually applies to a different part of the deck. So it's a kind of a confusing situation there. And that was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then Ace World Companies requesting a height variance to 60 feet, 4 inches located at 250 J.D. Yarnell Industrial Parkway. They make industrial cranes and they need the headspace where our current zoning is 55 feet and nobody seems to know for what reason. But they need the additional space to be able to construct their industrial cranes. So they have bought, I forget the property that they bought, but they have bought the property and they want to start the business there, but they do need a variance to be able to build those 60 feet cranes that they want to sell. And that was also approved.
Right.
Also, on the, on the agenda, we did move the March meeting to March 4th for the Board of Zoning Appeals and Regional Planning Commission. Any questions?
What was the reason to move the meeting?
I'd have to, I don't, oh, Joe couldn't be there. Joe Bear.
Oh, okay.
Our city planning advisor who is very critical to a lot of things we're doing right there.
Any other questions for Councilman Gann? Thanks Larry. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Farah.
First, I want to give an update to our water and sewer issues. Due to the historic rains that we have experienced over the last two months, in particular last week, our water and sewer department has been stressed. Those of you that live along River Bend and Riverside know this well. CUB has been contacted and they are working diligently to minimize your problems. The crews have been out both day and night and they have been working around the clock. Having said this, and those of you that are listening to me, I know that if you're experiencing sewer problems, my words of assurance probably don't comfort you. CUB is doing what they can and you have been heard. And I can assure you that, that everything within our power as a board, we're, we're doing everything that we know to do. I don't believe that any system could withstand what, what we're up against. On the electric side of the, of the house, currently we do not experience anyone out of power that I know of. KUB, as of Saturday, had 788 to R0. Now, I know that some of us have experienced some power outages intermittently, but for the most part, we've held up well. It is a continuing situation that we are monitoring. I don't expect to have any adverse weather in the next few days, so let's hope for that. Having said that, I wanted to also address the workshop that was held.
Can we talk about what you just, what you just covered a little bit?
Sure, you can.
And if anybody else would like to join in. Couple of things, and again, I'm not very knowledgeable on sewers and how they work and operate, but I have, I know there's a property on Fowler that luckily their flushout valve was already open and it was like a geyser of water coming up. And some of it was sewer, but most of it was just rainwater. So I guess in my simple way of thinking is that the rainwater's getting into the sewer some way for that to be overflowed. So I guess my question is, are they gonna, is there concern to see where that water's coming from?
Yes, so to my understanding, and I'm not the expert, and Jim, you've been on the board, so I want you to weigh in, but, you know, there are leaks in any system. There are...
But that's, that's not a leak.
There are manhole covers that, that aren't, sometimes unaccounted for. There's, water gets in to those pipes. I mean, it just, it just does. And, and I don't know that there's much, other than the maintenance and the continual ongoing maintaining and capital improvements that they do, it's just, you know, an awful side effect of running a sewer system.
Well, I just hope, you know, these, these type of rains don't happen on a regular basis, but to be able to look and not just to be satisfied to say, and I'm not saying you, I'm just talking about me in general, to say, well, this is, this is beyond our control, this is something that just happens. You know, you've got places like Riverside and you've got Anderson Heights and that area in Fowler, low, low areas that really have really kinda, they've just got a lot of water. And my concern is, what's, my other point is, is there's this lot of waste on the ground. And I guess from a health standpoint, I mean, are we obligated, is CUB obligated to come to those areas and kinda do some type of cleanup? Because I'm talking about people that are ill and some people have small children and literally they have waste on their yard. Now, I don't know, can we go to every yard now? But I think if there's some concerns amongst the residents and they call and say, hey, I need some help, that either, I would think it'd be CUB's responsibility for the cities, that we need to have some type of service to help with that. And I don't know, I don't expect you to have the answer to that, but you can take it back and, because there needs to be some type of support versus we can't, there's nothing we can do. Because that's not the best answer to give.
There is a gentleman on Riverside that I'm very close with and he has experienced a lot of issues with his, his toilets. And, and there's water coming out of the toilets and there's, you know, situations with sanitary issues and it's just not, I don't have any answers for it.
Has CUB been to that location and looked at that location? I mean, it's one thing to make a phone call...
My understanding is CUB is well aware of this issue and it has been an issue that has been ongoing and they've been made aware.
I think they need to, personally, myself, if I was that person, I'd want them to, I would want to be known that they're made aware, but I think it would be good if somebody in a truck came by there and reassured the person and looked at it. I mean, it's one thing to be on the phone, but it's another thing to, to get a visit.
Well, what I, and I haven't been, you know, we haven't had a board meeting since this information and, but what I would expect is, as a public utility, that we make that right. I mean, this person lives in the middle of town on one of our most prominent streets, one of our most beautiful streets.
Right.
And I understand it's in a low-lying area, but, I mean, fix it, right?
Correct.
Right. I mean, again, find a way to get to yes instead of get to no. I saw we can't help. And I know, you know, I want to brag on them, you know, they do do a lot right and those guys at CUB have been working around the clock, 24 hours. But to our, you know, to our constituents, to our constituents, to their ratepayers, sometimes your best isn't good enough. And it doesn't give the individuals that can't flush their commodes comfort.
Right, reassurance.
It just, and so I think those people need to be heard and, and we need to come up with solutions to their problems and not just, well, golly gee shucks, you live in a tough spot. Again, this is Riverside, you know, it's not, doesn't seem to me to be, we've gotta fix it, so.
Well, just take that back to the board.
Did you say your cleanout was open?
It was, there was a loose cover on it.
It popped out.
And it popped it out, because apparently that house has had that problem before and that's why it was, because if it didn't pop out, then it would have been in the house and that would have been a mess.
I know that our, our general manager takes these, these issues very seriously and, and he cares very deeply about this community and that he wants to fix these things. I do believe what we experienced was the most rain that we had seen since 1873. Having said that, we need to be proactive and we need to be engaging our individuals that have experienced problems and fixing them and providing people with solutions because it will rain again. We will have heavy rains again. So I anticipate that CUB will continue to, to lead the utility community and being a first-rate utility and addressing these problems.
Thank you.
I've got more to go.
Riverside resident, I did speak to him this afternoon, that CUB did tell him as soon as the water went down, holding up, they would bring a camera down, run it through his system and see if they could locate any, any issues. So I'll follow up with him tomorrow and see if they've done that.
Thank you. He was a very irate gentleman.
Yes, oh, I spoke to him too.
Yeah. We had a workshop, a residential workshop, excuse me, on residential development. It was well-attended. Several city council members were there. Chamber was represented. There was a wide array of disciplines that were there with surveyors, real estate agents, developers, contractors. So there's a, a great deal of interest in seeing CUB as it, its policies relate to residential developers. What you have before you are two items. You have one, this, this particular sheet that I've handed to city council members, this was presented, workshop items to be voted on. And so these items were voted and passed. Now, there was an amendment to amend some of this language and my understanding is, item number seven was, was amended in its entirety at this moment. But it was a unanimous vote. The board unanimously passed and supported these items to, to effect change that would hopefully encourage development. Also, what I've given you, this has not been voted on, this has not been officially presented, but I wanted you to see the language. This is language that I intend to, to make a motion, each of these points, points one through six. Now, I anticipate that there is going to be motions to amend the language and there will be a debate, if, if the motion gets seconded. So I'm being speculative a little bit. But this, this language basically, I believe, captures the sentiment of the developers and what they would like to see. And again, in consistent with keeping with the purpose and powers of CUB as expressed in Title 18. Part of that title, it talks about, CUB exists to extend and promote the system. And so there's a fundamental philosophical debate about what does extend and promote, what does that mean? Does that mean putting in infrastructure, bare-bones infrastructure to support development? And it also, there's a caveat in that as, to the extent that it's economically feasible, okay? So there's a cost-benefit analysis of us providing our ratepayers power, sewer, water. And I think that, to me, I think that we owe the ratepayers and we owe our community And I think that, to me, I think that, that we owe the ratepayers and we owe our community a duty, and that duty is to provide them these services. And, and so, and, and I think that's what the, the board is debating right now, how you define that, where do you put those limits? I don't think it's fair to a, to a customer to say, "You put in this line and then we'll service you," or "You put in this infrastructure." Once you've put that infrastructure in place, then we'll service you. If they're doing the work, if they're doing, it, that, that would seem to me like you're subsidizing CUB at the ratepayers' expense. And so there's, there's debates about, well, you have these zombie, what do they call it, zombie developments. I think, and Jim, you might have said this before, we can set a performance bond, a cost bond, something about, okay, if we're, if CUB's going to extend $100,000 worth of improvement, you're going to put up a bond, and if you fail to perform, then...
Call that move.
Then we'll call that bond. I mean, there, there has to be, there has to be a way. And I feel the momentum is on the side of the residential developers. You know, again, our general manager in CUB runs a very fiscally conservative shop. They are to be commended for that, and I want to draw a very distinct line. This is not about what CUB doesn't do, or this is not about CUB not doing a great job. CUB does a great job. This is about how can we do a better job?
Right.
You know, and, and, and it's not, in any shape, form, or fashion, an indictment or a statement on, on CUB in any way. But I think we can obviously look at the development we've had in the last 20 years, or the lack thereof, and identify that perhaps we have a problem. So, any questions about that, or any comments? I would welcome council's input on how they feel about that, because it's a very important issue that's affecting our community.
I think it's a move in the right direction. I mean, we talked about that, the mayor talked about that several months ago, about getting the utility board and council and the chamber and all those stakeholders in place, because I think we all want our communities to grow. The schools want it to grow, because, I mean, you get more students. I mean, again, you need good growth, and you need educated, smart growth, but I think this is exactly what we talked about six, eight months ago.
I agree. I think you're on, on the right track. I appreciate your efforts.
There was, there was a comment that, that, that was made, and I think the sentiment is, is shared. We don't want to have growth for the sake of growth. We want intelligent growth that our infrastructure can support.
Right.
We don't want to put an unnecessary strain on our school systems that's not ready for it, or our, our roads, or our sewer lines, right? But I do think that talking to the developers, and, you know, Mayor, you're, you're now in that real estate world, you see it, there is a, a real need and a want for, for new housing in, in this community. And when I've spoken with Knox County retail develop, you know, people in retail, they say rooftops drives retail. And if we want that mythical Chick-fil-A, I'll just put that out there, because everybody loves Chick-fil-A. If we want Chick-fil-A, we're going to have to have additional rooftops. So that's, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
Will the question and answers that night, a particular meeting, that satisfied some of the...
Developers.
Developers?
No, I don't, well, some of them, perhaps, but I think a lot of the developers were not satisfied, at least those that have communicated with me, and it's been numerous. And it's not, I want to say, it's not just one particular person. It, it is a host of individuals, and it is, it has generated a, a real groundswell of, of conversation, and, but no, I do not believe that the, are the developers happy that we're looking at this? Yes. Are the developers happy that some action was taken? Yes. But they want to see more substantial, or maybe I should say, bolder initiatives. But again, I think, I think there's, there's a middle ground, and everybody's going to have to give in this situation, if we're going to give it all.
Sure.
Everybody's going to have to have some skin in the game to where we feel like we're, we're being fair and equitable to our ratepayers, but also with an eye towards growth. Also, if you, I, I personally feel like that eventually, some of our rates are going to have to be adjusted, because they've been low for quite some time, and they're still going to be low. But I, this is just me forecasting the future. I think that, that we're probably in for, for some rate adjustments in the future.
But I think that you can make the argument, if, if you see the growth that we'd like to see, that that's going to increase the chances of, of our rates staying, staying low.
Correct.
To offset that cost.
I agree.
And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not, I've never supported or never talked about, you know, I don't want to double or triple the size of this town. I think that's why, you know, we want to live here, because I think it's a small town, and we like the small town. But we still need growth. You know, I think, you know, the, the growth that we've seen in Powell and Hardin Valley, and, I mean, that's great for them, but I'm, you know, I, I don't think it's anybody's interest on this board and on this stage that would, you know, that's our, that's our goal. Like you said, Councilmember, I mean, we want to be smart about it and, and do the right thing to grow.
We've done a great job with industrial, I mean, the people that does industry, and we have a lot of people who come to work here.
And CUB was what, was really behind that growth.
On the industrial...
I mean, they really took the lead on that.
But we have a lot of folks who don't live in our community, who live elsewhere, so therefore, they don't buy groceries in Clinton. They don't buy, they may buy lunch at the interstate, or they might buy a tank of gas, but they come to work here, and then they jump on the interstate and they go north, or they go west, or whatever. I mean, we need folks living here, and we've got some good, decent-paying jobs, and we need, we need folks here buying groceries, birthday presents, lunches, suppers.
Property tax.
Property taxes, exactly.
Well, and we have, what, what do people look for? Low taxes?
Schools.
Right, schools.
Safe.
And we've got that.
Yep, right? Safety, and we have that. I mean, we have one of the best schools in the state, and the numbers bear that out. We have some of the lowest property taxes and lowest taxes in the state, and we have excellent services.
You know, one thing before we move on, and I forgot who told me this, but if it was a really good idea, it was, it came from me. But no, it, it came from somebody else, that maybe that these changes that are being made, maybe put, maybe put a five-year window on it. And, and then that way, after that five-year, or whatever that year period, to reassess it, to see if we need to continue that, or, or back it down, or whatever, because...
Well, I made, I made, I made the, the statement at the, at the, at the last CUB meeting, like, this could be an 18-month deal, it could be a 24-month deal. We don't have to be married to, to the concessions or the arrangements that we reach with, with development. And if we feel that we need to tighten up, or that we've, we've aired and went too far one way, then, then we can get it back to the middle of the road. I mean, what, what is before us, and the, the real development that I think is, is, is out there, is, is good. And it is, it is, it's not a fiction. It, it is a real plan, I think's going to benefit this community in a lot of positive ways.
Councilman Fair, are you, are these motions potential?
These are potential, right? So I wanted you to see them, if you had questions, if you wanted to, to add, if you had concerns, like, hey, whoa, that's, that's, that's a little too far to the left, or too far to the right. But I wanted this council to be aware of what their representative on the board is doing, and what, what he is proposing. I do anticipate that, that these motions will be amended, and they're, they're speculative in nature, I guess, at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. Did this, did these options come from the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the contractors, the surveyors, and everybody's aware of these?
Yes, those that were there.
Was they double this amount, and this is what they picked out, or how did they come up with the...
I think, I think that was a collaborative effort with our chairman, Charles Price, Steve Combs, amongst other board members, that, that was sort of a general agreement of what we took from the workshop.
Came from that meeting, right.
The, the initial workshop. What I've proposed here is a little more in-depth, and what I've proposed here, there's some overlap. But what I'm proposing has got, is, it has some more, more gravity to it, more, more, more detail.
Is there an urgency to this, and the reason I'm saying that, because of Patriot in South Clinton, Mr. Gann brought up some townhomes behind Walgreens, got a pretty good-sized residential area coming up toward Exit 122, three to 400 homes maybe in the next three years. Is this coming to a conclusion soon, or is this going to be a delay tactic? And is there going to be another workshop? How's this going to work?
So, yes, there's an urgency to it. One of the developers said that they're ready to break ground immediately, and they're ready to, to move, and they're put, they're having to put a great deal of work on hold.
Does any of these approve for him to be able to do what?
Well, I think what I gather is, in order for, for the developers to have affordable housing, that they need this approved, that without these approvals, that cost will be...
Per what?
And it'll be passed to...
Passed on.
It'll be passed on, so instead of buying your house for $200,000, you may be now in the 250s, and that's not where they want to be. And so there's, there's that concern. So it's, to me, it's not coming from a place where the developer's trying to be quote-unquote greedy.
Sure.
The developer's trying to hit a, a sweet spot for a price for a consumer.
Understand.
Affordable housing, yeah.
Right. The next workshop, is it already planned?
I think we're going to handle those workshops more or less at the meetings. I highly encourage everybody to, to come to the CUB board meetings.
Let me say that.
It is the second Thursday of the month, and if I'm mistaken, go to the CUB webpage.
It's 5:00?
5:30.
About 3:00?
And it's at the CUB building. You know, we've had more people in the last two CUB board meetings than I've, I've seen there in a year, and, and it's good to see. I mean, it, it, it shows a vibrant and engaged community, and like I said, I saw a lot of you there, and I've talked to most of you. I mean, it's, it's been a good thing.
Good. Anything else? Thanks again, Zach, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Larry, do we have anything under board and committee reports? Anything going on?
Not currently.
Okay.
I did meet, while I was in Nashville this last week, I did meet with some people from the State Museum. Hopefully, we can resolve some of the questions we've had. They're supposed to be in touch with us within the next couple of weeks to set up a meeting, solidify some of the things that are still in, in flux.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next is a general government report, Mr. Houck.
We have advertised for the Engineering Services for the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Improvement Grant Program for the Clinton Traffic Signalization Improvements. After evaluation of the proposals, we are recommending that the proposal from Cannon and Cannon Incorporated be accepted and will request authorization for the approval in the amount of $150,000.
Here, motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
So this is a grant?
Yes.
100% grant?
It's, yeah, T-dye.
Okay.
Just work on the signal part of it, or LED lighting, or...
It's the, the first phase of it is a study, and then we'll do phase two, and then it'll actually be, where it'll signalize everything from the interstate all the way through town.
Depending on the traffic flow?
Yes.
Okay.
Possibility of adding new lights, or...
Possible.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, I'll defer to Gail.
You've got your sales tax report in front of you. Those numbers you see, if you'll remember, those are December sales, so that's why we usually see an uptick because of Christmas. The city was up a little over 16 and 1/2 percent, and the county was up right at 8 percent. So, and I, I have, for some time, tracked all the individual cities. That uptick in the county was made up of the City of Clinton and the City of Oak Ridge. City of Oak Ridge continues to have an uptick in theirs with, with the new retail and stuff that they've got going on down there. Our property taxes, we've collected to date about 62 percent, so we're right at what we collected last year. The next few days, Gina and Kathy stay very busy in, in collecting all the property taxes. If you look at revenues and expenditures, we're within budget on all of them, actually a little ahead probably, when you look at timing on our revenues compared to budget.
Any questions for Gail?
Mr. Cook, we go back a year ago, and we were minus 8 percent at Christmas time.
Now, this time, you know, we talk about this, we never can really understand it or put our finger on anything. What would be the difference in that?
Sometimes it's, when it's collections, obviously, it's what the Department of Revenue receives in December. Sometimes you have taxpayers that don't pay, and maybe they delay it till January. Lots of times in, in December, you have annual taxpayers on sales taxes, not usually large amounts. And then sometimes it's corrections. You know, we'll, we'll discover somebody, a business in the wrong entity, we'll make the change, sometimes somebody else does. So it's, it's a constant influx of changes, and so it's real hard to narrow down specifically what that could be.
This is a good correction.
Yes, it's a good correction.
So is it sales tax that's collected in December, or November sales, though?
No.
Okay.
No, it's collected in December, transmitted, transmitted to the Department of Revenue in January.
Okay.
We receive...
So we're only one month behind?
Yes, I posted, yeah.
I thought we took...
Well, we run two months behind, but I post it back for you all, so you'll see it.
Oh, okay.
Just with one month delay.
Gail, is there anything you're keeping your eye on?
Nothing really, not right now.
Okay. Nothing you, keeps you up late at night?
Not yet.
Okay, good. Thank you.
With the changes in the Code of Reports Department, we are reviewing the overall operation of the department, including necessary equipment needs. We are recommending replacing an 11-year-old high, high-mileage vehicle. We have priced several vehicles through the state contract pricing, but have not yet determined a final purchase. Based on these needs, we request authorization to purchase a new vehicle at a total cost not to exceed $42,000, to be purchased either at state contract price or through a local dealer at a comparable or equal price.
Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? What kind of vehicle are you looking for, for...
Probably an SUV.
Yeah, like an Escape, or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does this include any of the electronics, though?
Probably some of it, yeah.
4200 is a pretty nice car.
Well, we don't know yet. That kind of gives us some leeway.
Okay.
We're trying to move fast and get somebody.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under the Recreation Department, the property at 350 Riverview Drive has been foreclosed on, has become available for purchase at a reasonable price. As this property is adjacent to the Carden Farm industrial tract that is now reserved for future recreational use, it could be beneficial use in conjunction with that site. We would therefore request authorization to purchase this property, 350 Riverview Drive, for fu, future public use at a cost of $31,900, plus any associated closing cost.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is it just vacant land now? We got a, we got a house on it?
No, it's, it's got a, a old house, trailer, something on it, plus a couple, I think a chicken coop, maybe, or something. We'd tear, we'd tear all that down and clean the property up, which needs it very bad.
It's right across the street from the park, it may be.
Pardon?
It's right across the street from the park.
It's across from the new access road that we put in on Riverview. Yes, sir.
It's, it's going to be a really good-looking piece of property when we do that 17 acres. It's what, 2.1 or 2.3 acres?
2.3 acres.
2.3.
And it's also part of the drainage for that area, talking with public works.
But that will go from the entrance, like you're saying, ET, all the way up to Carden Drive. I mean, and it narrows to Carden Drive, but it's a good, I mean, it's a good piece of property.
It goes from Riverview to Carden Drive.
Yeah, so the entrance there, and maybe another park to, to join with it, it's really going to, I think it's really going to add to it. And it's a great price. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I was actually, we'll give a, a quick update on Magnet Mills, but I see Jerry Glenn has walked in. I don't know if Jerry would like to, or speak on anything.
Did you want to speak today, Jerry?
I just came to take someone.
Go ahead and get to the podium for our viewers, name and address, please.
Jerry Glenn, 705 Gay Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee. I don't hear well, I had a decompression event in an airplane earlier this morning and still stopped up, so I may have to ask twice or speak loudly if you ask, but we have, I have had conversations with the mayor and with Mr. Houck and we are disappointed with our potential buyer developer. We as Clinch River realize we have an obligation to the city where we made an agreement to begin demolition on the Magnet Mills building. We have extended this contract for the purpose of a 1031 exchange, which is probably out here in the future somewhere, but we just felt that we had the obligation to move forward. And we have begun last week dismantling a formidable sprinkler system and taking all the electrical conduit out of the building, getting it ready to crush and demolish. So, we are in fact moving forward with the removal of the last masonry building on the Magnet Mills site.
Mr. Glenn, what's your timeline on that?
What's your timeline on that demo of that building?
I suspect with the equipment there, they're shipping in a, a piece of equipment from Indiana and I forget what it's called, but it should take less than 60 days to get the masonry down. It'll probably take us two more weeks to get the piping and everything out of, out of the building so we can go with this particular, it looks like a big alligator jaw. And I could send you links to the email, to the Facebook on it, but it, it chews down the building rather quickly. Pulverizes it as it goes and separates the rebar from the concrete.
What's the company's, can you disclose what the company you're going with this time?
Well, we're, it will be a, a joint venture between several. Right now, our attorney, Greg Pratt, we will be using his father, Charles Pratt, for a significant portion of it. We still have a good relationship with Mr. Johnson, which this deal may evolve into him doing a portion of it also. But we're, we're moving with whoever can move the quickest. We would like to get this ordeal over with and we've set a, set a 90-day target with everybody promising us they could do it in 60, so we'll be under the 90 days.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question. Mr. Glenn, my name is Zach Farah and, and if movement on demolition of that property has not started on the drop dead day as, as determined by the court system, it'll be my recommendation that we enjoin you from doing any further work and we demolish it ourselves.
You may.
So, that's, that's my position. I, I take this very seriously and, and, you know, we, we've been promised a lot and those promises have not been fulfilled. So, I'm going to make you a promise and I promise to fulfill mine. Thank you.
And that's, that's what I was going to speak, Mr. Glenn, looking at the calendar, you've only got 23 days to begin. We mentioned that they're shipping something in, March 20th is the deadline to start demolition and.
Well, we, we are doing demolition inside the building. It, there's 10-inch sprinkler pipe and we're having to tear that out so we don't co-mingle that with the concrete debris when it's crushed. So, we'll have a suitable field to get rid of.
I think under our court date, six, eight months ago, if you reacted on the demolition permit, you're supposed to have a plan at the same time. Am I, catch me up to speed on this, am I correct? Of what you're going to do once you tear this down, where's the plan?
Oh, the development plan?
Yes.
No, we, we have not finished a development plan, we've retained two civil engineers that we are working with now to come up with a master plan for the site. It will not be an executable development plan because quite honestly, we're not sure what to do with that much property once we get it cleared. We have systematically contacted a very large number of retailers through what a system we call Retail Lease Track, which is the database we use to fill up our shopping centers and our malls.
Could you name a few of those, please?
Say again.
Could you name a few of those?
No, but I can send you a list, I'll email you the entire list.
I think the plan, I think is supposed to be effective, what, we got 23 days left? I think the, the master plan or development plan is supposed to be due that day also.
Well, I'm, I, I've been in this business since 1970.
I'm just going by what the judge said on the last court date.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, quite honestly, you cannot develop a plan and execute it without input from your tenants. And to be honest with you, we have no tenants, the only tenants we had that expressed any interest at all in being on that Magnet Mills site were the ones who wanted to be inside the building if we redeveloped it. So, now with the buildings gone, we're starting basically with raw land. I, I can submit the master plans that the engineers come up with. They'll basically have pads or sites that are designated, like one for, we have an office building. We've, we even have a concept drawing on a, on a Class A office building adjacent to the CVS. We have concept plans for condos, multifamily housing, where the metal building is, the yellow building. Retail, we.
Can we move on, I mean, to be honest, I'm, I'm sorry to be rude.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have a lot of confidence in what's been said, so let's just move on.
Jerry, I'll, I'm going to send, I'll send codes enforcement over tomorrow to verify that demolition has started, so we'll send somebody on site tomorrow to verify everything.
Roger, we're ready on March 20th to move forward with our plan if they fail on their, what they said they would do.
We've already.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are you, are you through? Any questions for Roger before we move on? Thanks, Roger. Yeah?
Eagle Bend Road, what block is that, 900 block, Bill?
Between Franklin Woods and.
Yeah, between Franklin Woods and Councilman Drive, driveway, we have shut that road down and it's probably will be shut down an indefinite amount of time due to the recent storms and really due to TVA dropping the river down. It has damaged the roadway there considerably, it's dropped about three foot. The road is actually sliding into the river, so it's been, been repaired several times, but we're, we're actually got an engineer in today looking at it. We're going to try to do more of a permanent repair or actually not repair, a permanent fix to it. So, we'll ask some engineering to look at it, we may, may, we'll be as far as have to shift the road over into the bank 15, 20 feet and get it off the river. So, it's probably will be shut down at least, I don't know, four to six weeks, maybe longer, but we got detour signs set up and we'll be monitoring it.
Well, good thing is we don't have to worry about trucks going down Eagle Bend anymore. Hopefully, hopefully not anyway. That might be, that might be part of the fix. That's right. Anything else for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Under first readings of new ordinances, ordinance number 639, this is the zoning ordinance amendment. Roger, can you speak on that or, or Larry?
I can't remember which one that is.
All right, that's the, that's the downtown, uh, plan for downtown zoning that we put together. Joe, might just mention Joe Barrett has, there's no other city that has a plan like this. He's actually put together parts of about three or four other plans. The idea is to make it more friendly for downtown usage, to encourage downtown growth, at the same time to give a little bit more of a, of a power to the historical commission in, in trying to keep a consistent look downtown. All of this is built upon the idea of trying to promote a favorable downtown area that will, that will foster growth and will bring more people into the downtown area.
Just to remind, to remind the council, this is, of course, it takes two readings for the ordinance, this is first reading. More of the discussion usually goes into the, the second reading.
And the changes in the ordinance are highlighted in the yellow, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, so everybody would know what the changes in the new ordinance.
Okay.
They're highlighted.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
No.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number 639 passes on first reading. On ordinance number 640, this is the rezoning of B4 to R3. I don't think we need any more discussion on that, I think everybody's pretty clear on, on what that is. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Hear a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number 640 passes on first of two readings. Second and final reading, there's none. Under resolutions, resolution number 775, this is the T-DOT turn lane construction at the I-75 northbound exit ramp. Roger, you'd like to speak on that?
T-DOT asked for a resolution, we've been working on this, actually with the Lieutenant Governor, supporting it for two to three years. And this is the northbound op, exit ramp and this will give us one, one lane turning right going towards Andersonville North, two lanes turning left coming into Clinton. So, it'll help, hopefully help the congestion, especially in the afternoons and it's just. Pardon?
I think it's on that I gave you.
Yeah, and it's on update that Coach Gann just gave us on their project, so it's just moving forward with it, but we've been working on it a couple of years back.
Should I say something else, start working on it soon, I know it's a state.
I think it's got on their, uh, look for bids first quarter of 2019.
Northbound exit ramp. It's right now in right of way and utility process is underway.
Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, resolution number 775 passes on first reading. Resolution 776, this is the TIF proposal with VLR Hotels 5 LLC. Mr. Meredith, would you like to speak on this? Or Roger? I figure you were here for something. It's not like you don't come to enough meetings. Would you like to give us the, the 50,000-foot view?
Thank you, Mayor, Rick Meredith, President of Anderson County Chamber of Commerce, 102 Waterston Way. You have before you the TIF resolution on the economic impact plan. I have the actual owner of the hotel with us here tonight as along with his attorney, as well as Mr. Mamitov, who represents the Anderson County Industrial Board. This resolution's passed the industrial board unanimously, as well as county commission last week on a vote 14 to 1. So, I'm not going to do, I think you can read the devil's in the details as far as all of that, it's just an economic plan. The financing part will come back to this council for final approval. I did share the feasibility study with, with Gail, 100 and something pages long, I figured you all didn't want a copy of all of that, so she has reviewed that. Mr. Mamitov is here as well as the, the owner, if you have any questions, but we have the opportunity to put an 81-room hotel at an old burned-out spot next to Harrison's, so here the final step to this approval.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support it unless he brings a hotel or, or a, or a big restaurant or a Chick-fil-A, it's one of the two.
I'll let him answer that question. I get the Chick-fil-A question mighty often, so.
Any questions for Rick? Thanks, Rick.
This is a problem from Harrison's.
Right next door, yes, sir.
Gail, you went to the meeting, is there anything you want to add as far as any details or anything discussed?
This is our first one, so it's learning experience in this role.
So, how many, how many more steps are there, will there be?
The final process, once, this is the economic impact plan resolution, the financing part will come back to this body for, all three bodies for final approval.
Okay, great.
And what's the timetable for something like that, I mean?
Mark, what do you think?
Rick, I mean, actually, this is the, once this is approved, the, the, nothing, this is, this is the only vote for this body. It just goes back to the industrial development board. I know that the owner is very anxious to move forward, so he, he would have liked to have been on this last month's cycle of things. So, I, I, as soon as he gets us a term sheet and obviously, I'm not, I'm, I'm a bond lawyer, I'm working with Phil on this and I'm, I'm sort of special counsel of the industrial development board and the, so I would think in the next 30 days, we'd be back to the IDB to ask them to approve the financing for it, if you all approve this tonight.
One of the smartest men in jurisprudence in the legal world, right there.
I think he's getting his wallet out right now.
People say, oh, he's the best bond lawyer, no, he's not, I'm the only bond lawyer.
Thank you, thanks, thanks, Rick, I appreciate that. Any other discussion? Have we made a motion on this yet?
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, the footprint of this new motel versus the old, Rick, I guess, quite a bit bigger square footage wise, and the lower parking lot, I guess, where the tractor trailer rigs like to stay, what's going to be done with it? It's gravel now.
That's a part of the parcel.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a part of the parcel. The property line is just right on the other side of that, where Long John Silvers was.
Right, good layout. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, resolution number 776 passes. And Mr. Patel, thank you for wanting to come to Clinton and invest, I wish you much success.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 777, Gail, would you like to talk about that a little bit, because I don't know what it's, what that resolution?
This is our most important one, this is a dog park.
Well, it is for dog lovers.
It is. The Boyd Foundation, Roger, and they contacted Roger, they do $25,000 grants and they do one $100,000 grant, they do, I don't know how many, 30, so 25,000 a year. So, this is something that Roger's talked about doing over there in the 17-acre area. Really don't have any plans or anything, we're just going to see if we can get the grant and go from there.
Good, good.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, resolution number 777 passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, I think we have the Hollingsworth Group. Mike, if you'd like to come up and, or Joe, wherever he, might, did he leave? Make sure, camera person in the back, make sure, give us a thumbs up, make sure our viewers are able to see that picture also. It is on the screen, okay. Never mind, thank you. If you state your name, just name and address, please, sir.
I'll be Joe Hollingsworth. Live at One Rocky Top overlooking the fine Kmart. Gentlemen, first, I'd like to congratulate you. I don't remember ever attending a city council meeting or a county commission meeting or any public meeting where over 50% of the conversation was about how to grow. Wow, quite an achievement. Your leadership has brought us to a very interesting point on our family foundation. And while I wish I could announce a Chick-fil-A and make everybody happy, we're going to, would like to make the city acquainted with a private park. Some of you remember 10 years ago, we worked with Jerry Shattuck and the city. City Council for trying to dedicate a 60-acre park across from my house, the big flat area there in South Clinton. And at that time, we had a financial meltdown. The city had all sorts of problems. We realized that what we were asking the city to do mainly at that time was pick up part of the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the park if we would fund it. In our discovery work over the past 10 years, we learned that private parks with conservancies are a far more reliable way to ensure a park for 100 years. This park should be better 100 years from the day it opens. So our goal here is to proudly, to try to display the powerful history of Clinton. It's not just the Clinton 12. It's not the birthplace of freshwater pearls. It's not just the Museum of Appalachia. It's just a whole combination of things. And so we wanted to feature a park that frankly, we haven't been able to find one in the nation similar to this, that was sizable and could make a real lifestyle change for the town and become an economic recruiter quietly every day. So our intention is to do something that's national class. And so we have worked hard to accomplish that. You're sitting here, 11 million visitors to the Great Smoky Mountains, 4 million to Dollywood, 150 to Museum of Appalachia. We've got I-75, a river of money, and we need to figure this out. Well, you guys are figuring it out. We just want to be a part of it. So when the Clinton vision stepped forward and we saw your support, we decided it was time to try to move forward on the park. And so while this is a private park and it will be totally funded outside of government funds, we're just presenting this to you in hopes that we can get untiring support. I'm sure you hear about from various developers, the Magnet Mill's a really good example. It is hard to develop. There are so many people to say no. The line is long. And if you don't have a real good group that are solid and push forward, you can't get through the morass. So we would ask their county and our city governments to step forward and try to help us in this. I don't think it will require any money, just help, just support. And part of this is getting TVA to cooperate and other federal agencies and get through all that stuff. So this park, the size of this park will be greater than 450 acres, right in the heart of your town, visible. And so our idea here is that while we have all this powerful history, maybe we could get them to stay a day, or maybe we can get them to stay a lifetime. But what we'd like to be able to do is present a really cool nationally-recognized park. And I'm going to introduce to you Mike Wallace, who heads our foundation, and he's got a couple of minutes he'd like to talk, and then introduce to you the landscape architects that have been chosen. And thank you.
Hello to those of you that I know, hello. And those of you I don't, hello. So my name's Mike Wallace, soon to be resident of Clinton. I actually live in Knoxville, but planning on moving here.
If you wouldn't mind to put the presentation up.
So the Hollingsworth Foundation has challenged me with going around the United States to try to find parks that are similar in topography and landscape and vision to what Clinton has. I've been to 50 parks over the last eight months, and I can tell you honestly, there's nowhere that has what we have here. As far as the capability for the landscapes, you have, I don't want to steal their thunder, but we have multiple assets here that can help push our town forward for economic development, education and conservation, plus many other aspects. So here's just a few of the parks that I've visited over the last eight months. I've been everywhere from New York to Tulsa. I've been to Texas, Chicago, been around to all the local parks. These parks are small in nature to large in nature, up to 450 to 4,000 acres, including Shelby Farms. So I've met with executive directors, people that run conservancies, and now we have over 600 years of network experience in our park at our disposal. I can call these people up at any time and say, "Hey, what are you doing for this venue? What do you, how do you attract visitors? How do you get people to come to your town, to stay?" And to reiterate what Joe was saying, we want them to come for a day, maybe two. You know, that brings a lot of money through the town. It also brings people to town that could possibly want to move here. So, you know, our goal, in my opinion, is to get the people that live here to stay here, and also to bring growth and opportunity for the town to get people to come here. And so we believe parks, and what I've seen in my travels, parks promote many things. Pause for dramatic effect. As we were saying, economic development. It also promotes a good environmental consciousness. It's an opportunity to educate, which we also do at JA locally. We'd like to take some of those philosophies and bring them outside. Get the kids, you know, off the iPads, which are not a bad thing, to get their feet dirty and get them out there, let them learn about their community and learn about what is offered here. There is some value to property that can increase due to parks. It also has physical and psychological health issues. And one of the most important things is that it strengthens communities. So anytime that parks go in, and I've seen this, in only a brief amount of time in eight months, but communities grow. People come out, they take pride in what they have. It's an asset for your community and your city. We are performing right now a market and feasibility study, which will conclude soon, so we'll be able to share those results with you. It's more of a broad spectrum of the area of what's available. So also, economic impacts, it has an injection of money into the town, not only during the construction phase, but it also brings new people, as Joe was saying, right off of the interstate. There's 20,000 cars that pass in front of that park property every day. So we can capitalize on that and bring people to the town to visit, to stay, possibly move here. So you guys can read this. These are just massive, massive numbers that just support that parks bring economic development. They bring community support. I mean, there's a lot of big numbers up here, right? So, but what I can tell you just from my travels is this is true. Chicago, New York, Norris Lake, doesn't matter where a park is, it brings communities together, and it brings economic development. So I would also like to introduce Chris Markinkowski from Port to go over a little bit of our dream and our vision.
Thanks, Mike. This is not Clinton. This is Knoxville. But I just wanted to point out, we got involved with this project. We're Landscape Architecture Urban Design Practice based in Chicago and Philadelphia. But we've actually been working in Tennessee for about three and a half years now, primarily in South Knoxville, and have had a lot of involvement in projects that take assets that are sort of unrecognized or not sort of seen as being an asset, and transforming them into a place of public community and public activity. And we're really excited about the opportunity here in Clinton to do something like that. As I said, we got involved about two and a half months ago as part of a competition that was organized by the Hollingsworth Foundation. We came out here in early December, and there were two things that really inspired us about the site and the possibility of this project. One was sort of Joe's ambition for it, you know, the ability to connect the city to the river, connect the community and the park to the river, create catalysts for economic development, provide education, new formats of education, and really keep people here and bring people here through the venue. But the other thing that really struck us is just the landscape that we are working with. I'm sure many of you know the property. You've driven by it. You may have even spent time on there. But when we were here in early December, it was cold, it was wet, it was raw, it was pretty miserable, but it was actually still a fantastic site. And the reason it was fantastic was because of the kind of landscapes that are already there. When you look at it, you've got a 360-foot high ridge, you have over a mile of riverfront, you have two islands that are adjacent to it, and you have this sort of potentially amazing meadow at the center of it. And for us, the project is really about kind of enhancing those landscapes and sort of opening up to access by the community and by the public, both in Clinton and more broadly. So our approach to this, and what I'd like to go through with you today very, very briefly, is a kind of vision for the transformation of this property into a public park, into a public recreation and education venue. And our approach is very simple. It's to take these four existing landscapes, these qualities of the place, the mountain, the island, the river, and the meadow, and link them together and make them into a facility for both Clintonites as well as the broader public. In doing this, we put together a kind of framework plan that looked at a whole series of different strategies for transforming that area. The real focus of this is the center of it, the kind of core area that you see here. And the reason that we focused in this area is because it's a chance to bring people into one point and then allow them to visit the sort of the 450 acres that Joe described above. The landing is an area that we imagine as being quite active. It's probably the most publicly programmed part of the park. It's a place where you might have really interesting kind of landform features, playgrounds, lots of recreation. It's the most animated and active piece of it. The thing that makes it different, though, is that there's also a facility there that is more than just a piece of recreation. It's a facility that we call the onward and upward center. This is a building that's kind of a hybrid. On one hand, it provides sort of public facilities, things like workshops and maker spaces and classrooms, and places to sort of think about education and think about entrepreneurialism. On the other side, it provides community amenities. These are things like a beer garden or terraces or a wedding venue, sort of things that are a little bit more in line with what you would think of as a recreational venue. But when you put those two things together, it really transforms the park into something else, something more than just a place to hang out and to run, transforms it into a real community amenity. And I think that's the thing that's most powerful for us about the potential of this project. The other thing that this landing or the center point does is it allows us to connect to those four landscapes. And so as you can see in this little diagram, you know, whether it's going to the meadow or the island or the river or the mountains, it's from this point that you're able to experience all 450 acres of the park. And what's exciting about that is the ability to transform something that's just a kind of leftover field into something that has a real character and a real quality to it, a place that can even become, start to become environmentally and ecologically productive, a pollinator garden full of birds and bees in the meadow area. You have the mountain and really creating sort of access to a whole network of trails, aiming for upwards of 15 to 20 miles of trails of different types and different skills. And at the center of that, the possibility of not just an overlook from the ridge, but a kind of tower that lets you see the whole landscape around it. You know, that kind of transformation, both to experience the existing landscape and insert something new, is something that's quite powerful for us. The river itself is obviously an amazing asset, and trying to provide direct access to that is something that we're looking for. Sort of the scale and the format of those is something that we're developing right now as part of the schematic design process. But the river itself, you know, the powerful thing of being able to drop in at the landing or at the core and sort of float your way down around the bend and land up at the boathouse just by the bridge there, could be a really amazing experience to add to the kind of qualities that are available in the park itself. So that sort of riverine quality adds to the kind of landscapes, is one of those landscapes that we're really kind of excited about. And then finally, you have the islands. And the islands are in a place that you can get to easily. They provide a very different kind of quality, but they are a place that's available to access if you can sort of make the effort to get there. So it's a different kind of recreation. It's a different kind of education, but it's something that we think is quite important for the kind of diversity of experiences that would be available in this park. All of those landscapes, all of those components do a number of things, but for us, what they really do is they inspire a sense of challenge, a sense of curiosity, a sense of exploration that we think is really important just to a kind of public imagination. And in many ways, that's what this park does. It inspires and aspires to sort of drive the imagination of the public of Clinton, as well as the broader public. And so this is a kind of overview that you see of the project. We're very early in its sort of design, but it's something that we're working quite hard on to develop and to implement as soon as possible. With that in mind, there's actually a public event that we wanted to announce. There's a site introduction that we're going to stage on March 16th, in Saturday, March 16th, in about two weeks. From 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, it'll be a chance to come out onto the site, to take a hike, to walk it, a kind of guided hike, and to talk with some of us who are involved in the project about what the ambitions are for it. It's a chance to really see what is a pretty spectacular landscape. And as I said, when we came here first, horrible weather, couldn't really see much, but you knew there was a great character there. And when you actually get out onto the site, you discover how much better it even is than your imagination can suggest. And with that, I just want to turn it back over to Joe to say a few sort of closing words.
To find Chris and his team out of Chicago and Philly, we worked hard. Invited numerous to visit, numerous to talk, competition, a nationally-recognized competition, and they clearly won. They had the vision. And so one of the nice things about this is we want a themed park. And we want something to be aspirational. There's a lot, like 100 stories about people who have developed Clinton, developed Anderson County, and you walk along a trail a mile long, and every once in a while, you see this granite story that's laid in the trail of somebody. It's gone before you. Hey, I can do that. So we'd like to create something that has some magic to it. And so to do all that, obviously, it takes a little bit of creativity. We've had to import that. But from there, are there any questions? Any comments?
Joe, the island, is that currently owned by TVA at this time?
Yes. There's half of the mountain that's controlled by TVA.
Okay.
We own the other half now privately. And the two islands are controlled by TVA. And they have various zones and what you can do on each zone. And so we're navigating, forgive the pun, we're navigating our way through that right now.
The biggest questions I have is, and the question that's been posed to me has to do with the flash. And I knew, when you walked in the door tonight, you knew that that was probably going to be a question.
Absolutely.
Because it's in the Knoxville New Sentinel. Seems like every other week. It might be every two and a half weeks or so.
Mm-hmm.
But I do have some questions about that in regards to TDEC and the letter that the city got. So I don't know, is there a TDEC representative here?
There's three.
Three TDEC representatives. Okay. I'm just going to start off with question number one. And again, this is a question I may, I hope I've worded it correctly, but my question is, is TDEC the body that we should be asking these type questions to? And what is TDEC's background and training in assessing or in answering these concerns? So fly ash, I don't think the general population had heard of fly ash until a few years ago. Am I right? Maybe people in the field knew about it, but the average citizen did not know such a thing as fly ash. So...
Well, that's been part of the, it's unfortunate what happened in Kingston.
Yes.
It's been part of the journey that we've taken with this. And if you can't handle things correctly, obviously, they get out of hand. When you walked in tonight, you walked on fly ash. That was in your concrete. The walls, all the block walls, and probably not in this facility, most facilities now have fly ash in them. So fly ash is everywhere it's used as a product. It's just how you use it. And so we asked TDEC to look at this years ago. And so I monitored this for a long time. And then I think the city's asked for a report, so I'll let them address that.
I think it may be Fort Mary. You may want to explain if we get asked, TDEC, that we sent a letter, what, two, three weeks ago, and asked TDEC to report to us on the site, and they have responded, met with us and have responded. So, and they have representatives here tonight to kind of explain that.
Well, you might want to just do an overview of the letter also in answering Mr. McBride's questions.
Sure.
My name is John LaCroy. I work for TDEC in the Knoxville Environmental Field Office. And TDEC does support the bringing this property back to use. We recommend that the council and the parties involved use our Brownfield Program to, as a resource, to bring this parcel back into service, just because it protects all parties involved against liability. And we have some experts here that can answer more specific questions about the Brownfield Program and the coal ash.
Well, going back to your question.
Yes.
You want to repeat the question again, so, and whoever can answer?
So I guess, I guess, we did as a city government, I mean, I know that it's private property, and I know that it's going to be funded through private donations and a foundation. But also, I feel like we have a bit of service to the citizens of the city who are potentially going to be users of this park. So I guess the first part of my question is, just to assure folks that we did the right thing, is TDEC the entity that we as city government needed to contact, or is there another entity somewhere? I mean, is this your job, I guess?
Yes. TDEC is the correct agency to come with a question like this.
That we did, okay.
Yes.
Then the second part of that question is, what is TDEC's experience? I mean, is this, besides Kingston, is this something that you guys deal with on a routine basis? Maybe not daily or weekly. I don't know what your daily jobs are. But is this foreign to you, or is this part of your normal work duties?
Coal ash is a... Coal ash is a solid waste that we deal with, and, and perhaps Ravendra, with our solid waste management division, can answer some more questions about that.
Okay.
Sure. My name is Ravendra Avasthy, and I am manager of Division of Solid Waste Management in Knoxville Field Office. And presently, our division monitors six TBA sites in Tennessee for coal ash fills and other landfills. They are type two, class two landfills, which are called industrial landfills. And this particular ash fill is outside of that program, actually. This was a private solid waste processing facility, actually, that, that is, what we call is a, is a permit by rule facility. So there was a permit issued to this site in 1994, and the fill went on until, I'm thinking probably year 2004 or something. And in 2008, this facility was closed by putting a cap on top of it, which is, generally involves two feet of clay or good soil. And the, the site was monitored by our division until, I would say, 2012 or 2013. And until that time, it looked to be in a pretty good, stable shape, actually.
So, do you monitor it past that time, or is it, are you, is TDEC done with its?
The TDEC is done with that monitoring.
Okay.
At this point, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many private sites do you manage or monitor?
Other than this, I'm not aware of any other site in our area here in, you know, Knoxville and surrounding.
The, the two foot of dirt, could it have changed since 2012, the last time it was checked?
Does that need to be rechecked, as far as like test spots, to make sure there's still, you'd say two foot's the, the minimum standard?
Minimum is, that's right. And over the years, it will slightly erode, just because of the rain action, but I would still think that not that much, you know, maybe a couple of inches or nothing more than that.
I know in the recent newspaper article with Kingston, they were talking about air contamination and, you know, monitoring that. Did I read that right? I mean, is that something that needs to be concerned, checked on? I mean, I think this is a super duper project.
I, I think so, too.
In all way, I think it's awesome.
Yes.
But I just want to be cautious.
Yeah.
With this part, and I realize, this is only a small part of the big pie.
Yes.
But I do think we have a due diligence to make sure that this small part.
Certainly.
Is safe.
Yes.
So, is, is it, is it necessary to do air monitoring?
Well, presently, I'm not aware of that conclusion being made by the TDEC. They are still looking into all of that, but, do you know anything about that, John?
Well, the brownfield program will allow us and the, all parties involved to take a closer look at, at all of these issues.
Okay, and that, that opens up the next question I have.
Sure.
In your letter, it said something about, we encourage the owner of the site and/or the city to enter in, to enter the site into our brownfields program. I don't think the city can do that, because we're not the property owner. Is that the plan, to enter this into the brownfield program? Who makes that decision, or is that something that will be?
Yeah, I'm thinking the developers will have to make that decision. I'm thinking that.
Am I right? The city can't do that, right? Do we know?
Yeah, so, hi, I'm Chrissy McNaughton. I am in charge of the remediation division for Knoxville, and we ho, are, house the brownfield program. So basically, what would happen in the brownfield program is, the owner would come in and set up a voluntary agreement with us. And what they would do is, they would do a phase one and a phase two assessment on the property, and they would send those reports to us, and we would say, okay, there's contamination we want to take a, a better look at. Basically, when you, when you negotiate a brownfield agreement, which this would be, you want to be able to, to give all of the contamination, because you're going to get liability protection for all contamination that's been identified. So we would go and say, okay, what do you want to use the property for? And we would give guidelines through our oversight, to say, we want to do extra work here, we could do air sampling in that, to make sure that everybody was safe. The, the owner would negotiate a brownfields agreement with us, that would say, this is the work, this is the contamination that we've identified, this is how we're going to address it to make it safe. They would go through that process with us, we would have oversight of that, and then at the end, comes a letter saying, you've done exactly what TDEC has asked, here's your letter saying that you get your liability protection moving forward. So it is, it's a great program to get blighted properties, or properties that have contamination back into reuse, and it's done over to, you know, with TDEC's oversight. So it's, it's a really good program, and we would be more than willing to work with the developers to do that. It, it's a great program, and it gives everybody kind of a, a sense of, an extra layer of security that things are safe, as they're being redeveloped.
Okay. Go ahead.
One other question I have is, the 500 acres, can somebody show us what portion of that property this affects? Because I just don't really know how big that area is, how small, et cetera.
I think, I think if I remember, it's nine percent of the total park, if that's correct.
The very, I can't point at this thing unfortunately. The, with the number 12, that would be area, the small yellowy, I'll point here. The sort of kidney shaped piece there, the sort of light yellow at the end, is the part that is part of the, the fly ash. So it is a very, very small portion of the much larger part.
Is that considered the, the meadows, pretty much encompassed as a?
The upper meadow, the upper meadow is the fly ash area. It's the capped area. Part of the reason that we've proposed that particular use on it is as a, a sort of additional remediation activity. The expectation is there would be no, there would be no puncturing of the cap, there would be no excavation that's going on there. It would be passive recreation activities that would go there, there might be a trail, the drive, the excess drive would come through there. But generally, everything that we'd be doing would be on top of that three feet of cap that we understand to be on the fly ash landfill.
Is there, is there thought of, of doing the browns, brownfield? I mean, is that, of that, and let me ask you this, when you do the brownfield, do you do just that small partial, or do you do the entire?
It depends. It depends what your ultimate goal is.
But in this particular case, just that small portion?
We could, we could annex that and just do that.
Just that small portion to assure, okay. Okay.
Absolutely, whatever they're interested in doing.
Okay. Joe, you mind speaking into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I think it's important to understand that this was done, this was done by private rule years ago. And it was done incredibly, with a lot of incredible foresight. In other words, they had a clay liner all the way across the bottom, two or three feet, and then a clay top. Now, they say two feet, I understand it was three feet, when I was there and measured it, it was three feet. And so, I had to watch this pretty carefully, to make sure that we'd have a good, successful outcome. Nothing's been disturbed there. In fact, we got a, out of the drainage pipe that runs in, under this, that takes the water from 25W. We got the test results from today of the water coming out of that pipe. You can drink it. So, we have no, we have no loss of fly ash, or there's no contaminants here. The contaminants are encased. And so, we're happy to look into the brownfield program, but if it means starting it 10 years from now, we probably, you know, the park 10 years from now, we probably couldn't get through that. And not to say anything bad about the brownfield program, because it really does a great service in a lot of situations. And you may use it for magnet mills. But, but as far as the park, we know what we have to do liability wise. And we have a safety plan drafted by the guy that wrote the state safety plan in place to be able to, if, if somebody accidentally touches it, what we do. So, we're gonna protect ourselves, obviously, and protect the city, and protect the citizens, but the brownfield only protects liability. It doesn't guarantee a success. It's just the best measurement that people typically know to use with the state. So, we'd like to take it a level above that, if we could, ourselves, but we're not sure that the brownfields, the program to go in, and we're investigating that, so I don't want to run it off. I'm just saying, we're a little bit leery about getting in that, because there's a lot of complications with it.
Well, you could always have your own commitment to, you know, do, do quality air samples once a quarter, or twice a year, or whatever, to be able to do that. You know, you don't have to be in a formal program to be able to do that.
No, we're, we will be far in excess of that. Not to say anything negative about the program, I'm just saying, we've got great incentive to do that right. You invest this kind of money, you want to make sure. The last thing we would ever have is, you know, it's like, one person's life destroyed Aruba. It's the same things here. You're not, you're not gonna get in a situation like that.
Well, I'd certainly recommend, and hopefully, we get this out on Facebook and social media, and put it on our website, as far as this, the site introduction on March 16th, and, because I know, a lot of people are gonna have a lot of questions, and I think in this community, like we've talked before, you talk about fly ash, and a lot of people, you know, relate, you know, what happened to, to Kingston.
Sure. It's understandable.
To, to what, what we have in Clinton, and it's really apples and oranges.
Right.
And we just really need to, just to educate in a good way, to, you know, what the difference is. You know, when you're talking about a, a piece of property that's, that, where the, where the fly ash is, it's, it's been encapsulated. It's not anywhere close to what was in Kingston. It's not even close. And it's open, and it spilled, and it was awful. But, and, and this all will be passive. And Joe, if you don't mind, I'd like to, can we keep that, and just put it in the lobby for about a week, for people that want to just come by? I'm talking about the?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And just come by and take a look. I mean, it just gives you a little snapshot of what we offer. But everything that we have that's in the meadow, it's all passive. There's no, there's no?
It's all passive.
It's gonna be hard to dig two feet, you know, on those areas.
Well, one, we're not digging.
Well, I'm talking about any visitors, yeah.
So let me tell you how that will be handled. We drilled on the little piece of property that's to the left, as you look at the property, the start of the hill. There's enough soil there, where we, if we do anything, we come up. We probably won't disturb it, but if we do anything, we add. We don't ever go down. So if you want to have a, a tree out there, you're gonna be adding dirt to support that tree. You understand what I'm saying? You're not gonna dig for water lines and sewer lines there. We just leave it alone.
Right. And one thing I, I think's encouraging about this also, in last, and correct me if I'm wrong, but over the last several years, it really hasn't been managed, or, or had any that much of oversight, it was just in the field. And now, with it being in the forefront of a park, and, and people seeing it every day, then it's gonna be more, have more attention than it ever has been, as far as it's being maintained, and the integrity of the encapsulations there, and, and everything is, is good.
Well, I can assure you, it will have a lot of attention, but this is the ultimate green. This is reuse. This is exactly what reuse is. For those of us that rode on four wheelers down in that track years ago, a lot of fun, a lot of fun, but it was the dirtiest dirt in town. The fly ash actually rated cleaner by the standards, by TDEC standards. The fly ash was cleaner dirt than the dirt that existed there. So, you gotta understand, we think we're very well protected here, but we're not gonna bar any kind of expense without just raising the standards incredibly high.
Okay, now, has this letter been shared? Does TDEC letter been shared? And so, there's some recommendations in here, were those, yeah, best?
Best management practices in this letter. I shared them with Mike last Friday, I think, and, and it's some, some good recommendations. Now, you know, one of the recommendations was, you know, Joe was talking about planting a tree, not to even plant a tree on the fly ash field, where that would have deep roots that would go down in it, stuff like that, that I, I hadn't even thought of. You know, any type of building that goes on it, you don't do a foot, or you have to do a monolithic slab type deal, so some really good recommendations. TDEC did a good job with some of that stuff, so.
So, is the intent of, to, to look at those recommendations and heed some of those recommendations, or all those recommendations, is that the?
Well, we've already done about half of them.
What, okay.
We've already done about half of them, and supplied the information. You'll get more information in the morning, Roger. But, yeah, we're gonna follow this as best we can. The brownfield, it requires more study, because it is a long-term forever commitment. And, and we don't know that that's, that we want to just do that basic safety. We think we want to be at a higher testing level.
Mr. Hollingsworth, I'm looking forward to the 16th of March. Community well-being, you're hitting them all, physical, social, environmental, so we're just trying to protect the citizens. I love it.
Well, thank you. We've got the same, the same inclination to protect the citizens. But it's a pleasure working with you guys.
And this is a private park, not gonna cost taxpayers any money, just want to make sure you're on record on that. Your, state your name and address again.
Write the check, right?
I think it's neat long-term, too, with the new bridge and the possible bicycle trails, like it all kind of.
Joe, can somebody talk a little bit about the, the bicycling trails, and what that means, and the impact, and, I think it's a pretty neat story.
Yeah, so I mean, the, part of the, part of the ambition, obviously, is with the, the new bridge, having a bike trail that, that comes across. And really, the, you know, the, the ambition is to have a certain scale of trail involved in the project, because once you get above, you know, I think it's like 12 or 15 total linear miles of trail, you start to get registered on kind of a national level, in terms of an amenity for people to come and, and, and visit. So, the ambition initially is that people are coming to the region for mountain biking, and this is an additional day, they know about this project, and so they stop over. And as it starts to build a certain reputation, it starts to gain an identity of its own, and it's a place that people will go out of their way to come to. We're working with Randy, I'm gonna blank on Randy. Randy Connor, who is, is sort of the, the sort of expert in the, in the area, and actually is starting to have a kind of national profile, in terms of putting those trails together, and sort of working with the landscape that's there. You know, we're really deferring to him in terms of where those things go and how they're configured. But the idea is that you have trails for, you know, that are, are super accessible for a, a young person or an elderly person, and then you have more technical trails that are more difficult to navigate. You have the full range that's there, and it's really, you know, I, I can't, I can't overstate how powerful of a site it is. We, we went out there a couple weeks ago and hiked around for, for a day, and it's just fantastic. And I think when people actually get out there, onto the ridge, they're just gonna be blown away by what is there. And, you know, there aren't, there aren't really trails there presently, they're just kind of, you know, knocked down, stomped down. But when we get those, that sort of network installed, it's gonna be something that's really a destination for, 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 for Clinton and the region.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if you said it or not, but if it's, we, you get to 15 miles of trail, then you get on the register for?
Yeah, exactly.
These, and apparently, they're very avid followers of, of things like that.
Oyston does it at 11 miles, so just to give you some, some idea of there, we get to 15 or above, and it's, it's a, it's a, excuse me. So the one thing I found out about hiking and biking trails is, is it creates a huge following. There's, there's people that come from Michigan, that come to the Great Smoky Mountains to ride trails. They, they come from Kentucky, they come from Texas, and so, what they do is, they get on Twitter, they get on Facebook, and they go, new trail in Clinton, Tennessee, and then it spreads like wildfire. So that'll be the initial influx of visitors, will come from the hiking and biking groups, and they'll bring, they'll bring all kinds of other groups in. You know, those, those people will probably come stay a day, ride the trails, and they'll probably go to Oyston, and they'll probably go to Hall Ridge. So, the important thing to know about the trails, as Chris was stating, they'll go from, you know, a blue, which is very moderate wide pedestrian path, to the green, which is a little bit more advanced, and then they'll get to the more technical trail. Now, we won't have a lot of that here, there'll be some technical aspects along the riz, where you can get a 360 degree view from the foundation property, as well as the TBA property. You can see all the way over to Eagle Bend, you can see the Clinton Island, and you can see the, where the new bridge and the magnet mills area is. So, it's gonna self advertise when people come here. So it'll be, it's gonna be a great experience for everyone, and, and that's one thing I learned about trails, is, it's booming, if you look at South Knoxville, you know, as Mayor Burton was talking about growth, if you look at the Ims area, I mean, houses that were there two years ago, three years ago, that sold for 30,000, are now selling for 125 and 150,000. Rent in that area has went from $400 a month to $1,500 a month.[1744.11] Rent in that area has went from $400 a month to $1,500 a month. And so you can see trails, it creates passion, and it creates these user groups that can come in from out of town and really bolster your city economically and socially, so...
Great. Any other questions?
Mr. Hollingsworth, you talked about city council meeting, talking about growth. And, you know, in the next three years, what timeframe are you talking about, hopefully? I know you've got some hurdles to jump, but what timeframe? Because I'm getting to the bridge, I'm getting to maybe 300 new house tops in the next three years, which puts kids in the schools, the schools gets bigger. Schools make a city grow, puts more people on Market Street and Main Street, so, and that's the interest of South Clinton, and I'm really excited about, once you go across the new bridge and you see your park, that's a pretty neat deal right there.
I don't want to paint too big of a picture.
Paint it.
Okay, but let me paint just a moment for you. When we say aspire, a Disney Imagineer will create the experience. So, once you get on the ground, people will talk about it, okay? And it'll become a destination. And so, that's our goal. Now, we may fall short of the goal, but we're going to really try. But, there's so much growth potential, lifestyle potential out of this, that we'd really like to initiate it as soon as we possibly could. It takes a dedicated effort, day in and day out. I mean, I cannot tell you the number of hours, just to get through TVA stuff, it just never ends. So, we would love to break ground later this summer, late this summer, but it is largely dependent on whether the city can help us, whether the county's willing to help us, whether TVA stays receptive. TDEC responded to you guys quickly, but, you know, that could have been 90 days. So, this stuff just piles up. But we're dedicated to plowing through it. And if, if we ask for help from you guys, just know that we've tried everything else, and we'd love for you to step up and help us, not financially, just be able to push TDEC, you know? And I want to thank you for doing that.
Well, to hear all the visions we've heard in the last two years, I'm glad to have a guy from Clinton have one big vision, so, thank you.
I think I know how to read that.
You should.
Joe, thank you, and thank you for not forgetting where you came from. Appreciate that.
And Mayor, I want to thank the TDEC representatives that came tonight. Thank you.[1783.88]